Follow this meeting to order, please stand for the class.
Yeah, I didn't do it.
Flagellations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, this is the Porter County Border Commissioners Meeting Tuesday, June 11th. We're going to go right into the consent agenda and I'll turn it over to Melanie.
Approval of payroll, May 31st, 2019, approval of minutes, May 21st, 2019, approval of claims, May 23rd, May 30th, and June 6th, 2019.
Okay, now we'll go to the, we have some artistic services agreements for the M O H Memorial Opera House, I'll turn that over to Commissioner Blaney.
We have artistic services agreements for Zach Flash, Ben Land, Andrew Hyde, Chris Dahlbaum, Andrew Riggle, Dan Huston, Bill Woods, Patrick Jansen, Bryce Cendricks, Jared Coller, Andrew Brent, Don Parker, Eric Lester, and Jeff Otto.
Okay, so that will fall under the consent agenda, I'll open it up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, second, to the consent agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion carries. Now we're going to move into announcements before we get to building, the meeting going here. I'd like to have Kevin Pizer come forward, please. Kevin is the manager, director, chief bottle washer for the Porter County Museum, Poco Museum, Poco Muse, and just wanted to formalize and acknowledge that the Porter County Museum has been awarded the prestigious 2019 American Association for State and Local History Award of Excellence. And that sounds like it has some pretty big clout, why don't you tell us a little bit about the award and go from there?
Sure, and you can call us anything you want, as long as you don't call us the old jail museum. I think there's a stigma with that, we aren't an old jail, but we're more than that. We are totally and utterly delighted to win this award and be recognized for our work with the exhibit, that anybody can come in, free of charge, Wednesday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m., Sundays now, 11:00 until 4:00, because we realize people maybe can't get out during the week, but they can come on the weekend. Do your part, county response to the First World War is a collaboration between many institutions here within the county that details the part the people did here to contribute to the effort during World War I. It was very timely when we opened this, it was the 100th anniversary of the end of the war, but the efforts of the people here, I feel like, you know, this is a situation where history repeats, there are a lot of really great people here in Porter County who do their part, and this is just an illustration how that is nothing new. And thanks to the efforts of people north, center, and south counties, some pretty incredible things happened here. So come take a look, and thank you for your support of what we do.
And you were awarded this award in Nashville, Tennessee, right?
Yeah, so we have a banquet coming up, it's part of a big annual meeting in August that I'm hopeful I can raise some money and bring my entire team to go and participate in this, but there are only 50 of these awards given out in a year, so it's a pretty big deal.
Well, congratulations, I think it further exemplifies the work that you and the volunteers and the people are doing out there at the Porter County Museum, and your leadership, and so thank you, Kevin, and all, great, great, great award, and we're all proud of you over here, so thank you.
Well, thank you, it's been the effort of people over the last 103 years, if the people here didn't do what they did, I'd have no job to report on that and tell you all the great things they did, so thank you.
You and the foundation have brought it a long way in a short time.
Well, we've got good neighbors and good venues here, and we just want to continue to move that forward for all of the county, so thank you for the recognition.
Good job.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yep, thank you, Kevin. Great award, and great recognition for this county. The other announcement that we have here is the Expo Center, we have completed the renovations and we are open for business, and we will be holding a public grand opening Friday 14th from 3:00 to 6:00 o'clock, that's this Friday, from 3:00 p.m. till 6:00 p.m., and the public is invited to come out and tour the facility and take a look at it and see what their tax dollars went for, and so we look forward to anybody that can make it, to show up and show off our, show off our work, so. And then the last one that we're going to discuss here in the announcements is that we will be accepting applications for the following board positions that are open, and these will be due in by June 25th, that's this month, June 25th, and as for Parks and Recreation, and we also have one for the Airport Authority, that's the Porter County Airport Board position coming up, so we're advertising and we're announcing those, and they will be, we will, they need to be in here by June 25th to be announced at our July 9th meeting, okay? One other clarification I'd like to make, then we'll get done with the announcements I'd like to make, currently the Board of Commissioners has a public meeting scheduled on July 2nd, and we are, we are extending that meeting, and we were going to be having that, we'll be canceling that meeting, but we'll be forming a new meeting on July 9th, so that's one week later, so please make a note, July 2nd meeting will now be, is no longer, and we'll be having the meeting on July 9th. Fourth of July is sort of a weird week, it's on a Thursday this year, so we just figured there'd be a lot of people possibly traveling that week and other things, and we just, we'll just pick it up and start the following Tuesday, so just want to make a note of that, we'll be directing those changes on the website and all social media and everything else where we can get the word out to let people know that that meeting will be changed. So I think that's it for announcements, we're going to move into the Commissioners' business here. First of all, we have an animal shelter service contract between Porter County and the City of Portage, I think that came in a week or two ago, correct, Terri McClure?
It did, City of Portage approved it at their Board of Works meeting April 9th, 2019, as presented, so.
And I think it's just the only one we have left, I think?
Chesterton has approved those, they're, they're contracted in the meeting, but they are currently efforting getting a signed copy to us for us to approve.
Okay.
It's only June.
We're working on it.
Motion to approve the Portage contract.
Second. We have a motion, second, for the Animal Shelter Services Contract between Porter County Government and the City of Portage, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion carries. Next, we have a resolution of the Porter County Commissioners concerning the assignment of tax sale certificates to governmental slash non-for-profit entities. Scott, you want to give us the lowdown?
Yeah, this was put together by Schrute and Freiman, they, this will be tax certificates for the City of Portage, for Town of Hebron, and for Falling Waters Conservancy District, most of these are dealing with either utilities such as stormwater and/or some redevelopment commission.
Any comments or questions from the ward?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, second, for a resolution for the Porter County Commissioners concerning the assignment of tax sale certificates to governmental or nonprofit entities, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion carries. Now we're going to move into Expo Center, and Laurie, you might want to come up here because we got a, we have a transfer that we're going to talk about in here, we'll do the transfer first, Scott, I think, or do you want to do that last, or does it matter? We'll do the transfer first, this transfer is not on the agenda, and we're perfectly within our rights to.
Yeah, we're just, this is a, this is an official action by the Commissioners, this is just the Commissioners' office knowing what you're going to be asking eventually the council to get through, but you have two of them, we've got one down under, so you have you, right now Expo Center renovations, but Kurt, Jeff jumped down to Expo Center, Laurie Daley, Director, so we have one transfer on for 7,000 from account 2230, Food and Groceries to account 3510 Power, that's to cover Nitsco Gas through the end of the year, and then the other one that Laurie did turn in, we just didn't get on the agenda, was a transfer of $500 from Food and Groceries to Office Supplies, this is to cover Office Supplies through the end of the year, so those are the two transfers.
And that'll still have to be approved by the council.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm on the agenda for 20th, I think.
Motion to approve both transfers.
Second. We have a motion, second, to approve a couple of transfers from the Expo Center, 2230, from account Food and Groceries to 2110, Office Supplies, for $500, and then we also have a request to transfer funds in the amount of 7,000 from account 2230, Food and Groceries, to 3510 Power, and that will cover Nitsco Gas through the end of year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion carries. And then we have a temporary occupancy license agreement between the Porter County Board of Commissioners and Nitsco, can we have, you wanted to?
If you have any questions, Tanya Stanley from Nice Horses here.
Okay.
This is the emergency agreement that we have with Nitsco for them, if they have some sort of gas emergency or emergency to allow them to have staging.
Yeah.
It just outlines everybody's rights as far as what they would be responsible for, as far as cleanup, if they ever had to activate this, and how long they would be there, and what we would be responsible for, and all the indemnifications back and forth, so.
Yeah.
I reviewed it, it's in good form, and I, this isn't the first time we've done this agreement, correct?
Uh, yeah, I believe so, yeah, this is more of a long-term.
Correct.
Rather than immediately.
Any questions from the board?
No. Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, second, for a temporary occupancy license agreement between the Porter County Board of Commissioners and Nitsco, this is in regards to the Expo Center property. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, now I'll get back on the agenda here, we're going to move up to Expo Center renovations, this is for, we've got a couple change orders coming in here at the end of the project, this is, first one is for Panjir Corporation, this is change order number three in the amount of $15,399 to provide new finishes in the brides room, wall extensions in the restroom, revised keying of existing doors and dispensers in women's restrooms, and what happened out of that is as we were working through the renovation of the project, we got about 60% through, and we saw an area very near the main room that we felt would make a good, sort of like a blue room type of, you know, if we have speakers in, or we have musicians in, obviously brides for a bridal type room, so that's, that's what that change order is for, it was in the original scope, and we felt that with the amount of weddings and things that we'd be getting out there, these type of rooms have become more and more sort of customary, as far as weddings and things, it's a big selling point too, so that's what that's for.
Well, I think if you can get out of creating one of those brides room and refinishing women's restrooms for $15,000, that's, that's got to be a deal.
There was keying as well.
Yeah. It turned out, it turned out quite nice.
Yeah, it's very nice, and I think it was a good location for it, too. I think it was a good idea, and I think it was absolutely necessary.
Has a small, private restroom.
Right, yeah.
We'll have that open on Thursday night.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, second, for change order number three, in the amount of $15,399 to provide new finishes bride room, wall extensions in restrooms, revised keying of existing doors and dispensers in women's restrooms, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion carries. Second one up is Continental Electric, this is change order number three, in the amount of $4,227, and this is to provide data jack, rough ends, new exit signs, wire in main hall, and spotlights in main hall, again, as we were going through and renovating the building, this was some of the low voltage wiring and some of the other things that just had, was, if you recall earlier in the meetings, a lot of the electrical in the original construction was fed from underground, when we got in and started looking at the underground electrical, it pretty much fallen apart, just gone bye-bye, so this is just the back end, the final piece of trying to pick up all the things that just weren't working anymore, relevant anymore, and plus fire, we had a couple exit signs that the fire marshal wanted us to have too out there, so we're putting those into this as well too, so, did I miss anything on that, Laurie, I think you got it covered up on there, so that's what, that's what that change order is for from Continental.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, second, change order number three, at the Expo for Continental Electric, $4,227, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Laurie Daley.
Before you go, I just wanted to say, the taste of Alperazo, I was at a meeting after that, and everybody had nothing but great things to say, and they really appreciated.
That's a doozy to start with, but we had a whole bunch of people on that, but yeah, that was, that was a day.
That's a tough group, I mean, they want things right, and you did it.
And they, you did it, so.
Yeah, you came through, good job.
We did receive, just found out, we received a community improvement award for the Expo remodel, we will be recognized on July 11th at a luncheon through the Valparaiso Chamber, so we're pretty excited about that.
Congratulations.
Thanks, congratulations to you.
Turned out nice, it really did.
Can't wait to show it off.
It's, I think everybody's going to be very pleasantly surprised, so.
Thursday night is the business.
Back end of this week, we'll be able to show her off.
Business, and then the public on, on Friday.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Is that all for her, she's on every page, I don't.
Yeah.
Our promises, promises.
I think we heard that in May.
Okay, we're going to move to the courthouse, we're nearing the end on all the work that's going on out there, so bear with us, we have some payoffs and some change, one, two change orders in here, first is for Garyup Construction, change order number three, in the amount of $19,118 to provide modifications to the existing vault, a new ADA ramp, and removal of patching of ceiling for balcony roof drain replacement, these were items that as we were working through the building sort of came up, and really needed, really needed to be done, and the, if you've noticed, there's the ceilings on the balcony roofs, they'd been done a few years back, but they still needed some attention, so we decided while we were finishing everything out on the inside, we better protect our roofs, because that's what causes leaks and makes the paint look bad inside, so I think we, change order number three, so that's on, that's on the docket for change order three for the courthouse.
Motion to approve.
Open it up. We have a motion, second, change order three, $19,118 for the courthouse renovation, as noted, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion carries. EMCOR Higher Electric, change order number three, this is a credit of $19,132, and this is a credit back to the county for unused contingency allowance, so what happens is in the contract, they had a contingency allowance for lighting and fixtures and other things, we did not, we did not use all that money, so now it's being credited back to us in the contract, so that's a, that's, that comes this way.
Motion.
Second. We have a motion, second, for credit, change order number three, $19,132 for unused contingency allowance for Higher Electric, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion carries. Garyup Construction, this is just their pay app number six, $15,076.50, that's for bid package number two.
Motion approved.
Second. We have a motion, second, for pay app six, for Garyup Construction, $15,076.50, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion carries. Higher Electric, again, this is their pay app number nine, and this is the amount of $4,102.10, and what's remaining is their retainage, and I'll put that to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, second, for pay app number nine, for Higher Electric, in the amount of $4,102.10, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion carries. We got Garyup Construction, this is their pay app number eight, in the amount of $20,669.15, and for general trades, this is part of their contract.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion, second, for pay app eight, $20,669.15 for Garyup Construction, and we have a remaining balance of $72,448.45, 85 cents, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion carries. Last pay app is for JW Wards, they're out of South Bend, and they are the company that's putting in the windows, the historic windows in the building, I would say they're probably about 60% done over there, finally got some dry weather, so they're picking up the pace a little bit, that's the last thing that needs to be done on that project, and then will be completed there, I know Ray Cloyde has some miscellaneous landscaping and some other things that we're going to be doing over there, some benches, some flower pots, and some other things that are on their way here, so that will finalize that project, so this is pay app number two, in the amount of $250,016.25.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, second, for JW Wards, pay app number two, in the amount of $250,1625, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion carries. Now we're going to move to North County Annex renovation, this is an allowance authorization, so again, like we in the last where we had the electrician that was giving us a credit back, this is the allowance for the North County Portage project, and what we're doing in here is this would, this would allow the authorization, the spend of that allowance money for $13,188.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, second, for allowance authorization, in the amount of $13,188 for Social Power Electric, to provide light fixtures and power revisions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion carries. Now we're going to move forward, skip, we already did the Laurie Daley stuff, this is for Ray Cloyde, we have facilities, this is three quotes for washing machines at the jail, what do you got going on there?
Morning, Ray. Good morning, how you guys doing? We have three washers there, one is malfunctioning, one's limping along, so we're replacing the one that's not functioning right now.
So how old are the other two?
19 years old, 17 years old, since the jail's been open.
And what's the weight, is this a 75 pounder or 50 pounder?
75.
75?
Mm-hmm.
And what's the brand? I didn't look.
Brand is.
Unimac? Milner?
Milner.
Okay, good unit.
It's an 80 pound Milner.
Yep, it's an 80 pound. 80 pound, yeah, okay.
Glad to hear that.
Me too.
Well, you, believe it or not, you can buy soup to nuts on that, so some of it's pretty cheap, some of the equipment out there, so, and we're all three the same?
Yes, okay, yeah.
Motion to approve, machine from Equipment International, low bid, low quote, $19,395.
Second. We have a motion, second, for purchase of a washing machine at the Porter County Jail from Equipment International for an 80 pound washer, $19,395, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, let's go do some laundry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Bob Thompson, Development, Stormwater Management. We also have Michael Novatny, County Engineer, and we'll start with first, Mike, why don't you give us the update on the historic rainfalls for the month of May?
Sure, well, as you, as you all know, it has been wet, and the rainfall data certainly documents that, so this is stretching back to April 27th, which is the, the last weekend in April, we had some snow and heavy rain, and stretching through the first weekend in June, based on COCO RAS, which is the Community Collaborative Rain, Hail, and Snow Network, we received between 11 and 13 inches of rainfall across Porter County for that, a little more than a month period, and really that's an incredible amount, typically we would expect to see three and a half inches of rain during the month of May, so we're at three to four times our, our normal rainfall amount, and just to put it in the big picture context, we expect to see about 40 inches of rain a year, which means that we received about 30% of our average annual rainfall just in a month period alone. The other significant thing is that we only had seven days during that period where we did not see any measurable rainfall, so anytime you had a warm, dry day, things started to dry out a little bit, and next day we got measurable rain, which didn't help at all. That had impacts on a bunch of things, number of drainage complaints that our department saw spiked dramatically, over the past month, we got about 125 drainage complaints in, has kept staff very busy, it takes about three to four hours per complaint to properly log, investigate, respond to those complaints, and then delegate them to work order for correction or engineering for further project development, it's had impact on farmers for sure, just looking at the latest USDA Crop Progress Report, and I think this is pretty reflective of what we see here in Porter County, Indiana as a whole only has about 31% of its corn planted at this time, typically, we've got 94% in the ground, and same with soybeans, only about 17% of soybeans has been planted, typical is 80%, so farmers are playing catch-up, making last ditch efforts across the county to get crop in, and then anybody that's involved in any construction projects, the capital improvement projects, our stuff at the department, private projects, the wet weather has had significant impacts, delaying work, reducing progress productivity, making things like fine grading and restoration type work, pretty much, so, it has been a wet, wet month of May, and hopefully we see a little dry period here, and don't go too much in the other direction, get really dry in the coming months, because that won't help anybody either.
Are you seeing any, have you read any projections of what the projection over the next 30 days is?
Sort of the, the next two week forecast, we still have some wet weather in that forecast, if you talk to some of the folks that, you know, look at the Farmer's Almanac, it looks like it might be a drier period over the next couple months, but you'll kind of see how that, how the forecast continued to change and develop.
Farmer's Almanac, it was, the wetness?
Yes, it did.
It did, it did.
I get one every year, I'm a believer.
It did predict, it did predict a wet spring.
I don't do a crystal ball or anything, I just read the book. Well, and thank you for the update, I know our department has been extremely stressed over the last three or four weeks, with calls and complaints, and just want to think, that's two years in a row, last year when we had the flooding down at Yankee Key, our department was taxed pretty heavily back then, too, so hopefully this is not a tradition every year, we'd like to let everybody settle in and get stuff done, because when we get these complaints, it really throws a wrench into what we're doing, and sort of slows things down.
Yes.
Because we're trying to take care of the complaints and trying to help the citizens out there, so thanks for the report, Mike.
You're welcome.
I will have to say, it's nice when we, since I was coming in, that we have response that it's kind of, it's all been part of community and advocacy.
Yeah, and I would just point out on that note, you know, sometimes a response is different from actually solving the problem, I think the expectation is that we might get lights flashing and come out there and start digging right away, that might not solve the problem, so we do respond, we do get back to everybody, let them know what our assessment is, but the fix may be a long-term project, it may be, it may be two years off because we might have to get permits, resolve utility conflicts, get easements, so there's a whole lot of things that we have to take care of sometimes, get, get a fix actually in the ground, instead of just a Band-Aid, instead of just a response, yep.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a couple second readings that we did at the last meeting, this first one is a petitioner Ronald and Janet Holzclaw, this is a vacation of a right of way in Seaver's Park subdivision, and this is second reading, is there any comments or questions from the board since that first reading, if we got any complaints or anything at the last first reading, so.
Motion to approve, second reading.
Second. We have a motion, second, for a vacation of a right of way in Seaver's Park subdivision for the petitioner Ronald and Janet Holzclaw, this is second reading, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign, motion carries. Next, we got Eagleview subdivision, this is a zoning. Next, we got Eagleview subdivision, this is a zoning amendment, and it's really amending the written commitments. This is second reading as well. At the last meeting where we had the first reading, again, there were no, nobody showed up to respond in any negative fashion or positive, either one. So this is second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion is second for Eagleview subdivision, zoning amendment of written commitments, second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have a rezone from A1 General Agriculture to I3 Heavy Industrial. This, the petitioner is the Malden Co-Alliance, and this is a zoning amendment request. This two is a second reading, and when they were here at the first reading, we did not have any remonstrators at that one either, so put it to the board.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. We have a motion is second for a rezone from A1 General Agriculture to I3 Heavy Industry, Industrial, for the petitioner Co-Alliance in Malden, Indiana, 49, Highway 49 in Malden, second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Motion carries. I think we're done with the second readings now. Next up, we have a planning workshop, Inc., this is a contract to provide professional services, and Bob, why don't you give us sort of an update as to what this is for and why we're doing it?
Okay, we have a number of new members on the planning commission, and the planning workshop, I want to say that probably around 2010, KK Gerhard Fritz is the principal for the planning workshop. KK came up and gave a training session to the planning commission and the BZA at that time, because we had a lot of new members. So we want to bring it back again, it was very valuable on that. We also have some training books, and I'm going to probably distribute at the June meeting and everything that discusses the role of the planning commission. So that's essentially what KK is going to be coming up and doing, and describing what the role of a planning commission member is, what they can take into consideration during a public hearing, a public comment session for a petition, and what they cannot for making a decision, and going about the proper path for making a decision at the planning commission. So this is what this is about.
Right. I think as we, as we broadcast and try to bring more citizens into county government, and county government does have a lot of citizen boards, we feel that it's our responsibility to make sure that these citizens are trained properly on what the laws are within planning commission rights and other things. And since we did have some new members, we felt that it was a good time with a lot that's going on right now in the county, we just felt it was a good time to do some retraining. So I think it's definitely worth the $2,000 that I think we're going to get out of it. I think the board members will benefit greatly from it as well, too.
And they're looking forward to it.
Are they?
Yeah, they're looking forward.
Good.
They want to learn more.
Good.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion is second for the planning workshop, Inc., this is a contract to provide professional services for training of the Porter County Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, in the amount of $2,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have a supplemental agreement with INDOT, Indiana Department of Transportation, for the reconstruction project of County Road 100 South, 2,000 feet west of County Road 725 West, to 1,000 feet east of County Road 500 West. So what this is basically supplemental agreement between the county and INDOT for the 100 South project that the county has working through the system right now. So what that entails is from, if the state is doing a roundabout at State Road 2 and 100 South, that's the road that goes to Lake of Four Seasons, that's 100 South, and then part, the state will be doing the roundabout, and then the county will be doing a bunch of work to 100 South, from 2 all the way to the county line. And a lot of intersection improvements, we'll be shaving some hills down for better visibility, and so there's quite a bit of work that is taking place, and this project is probably going to be, you know, construction probably right around sometime in 2020. I think, was that where we were at, Bob?
I believe we're into 2021 now, this spring.
So, and what does this supplemental agreement do for us, Bob?
Essentially, INDOT is the manager of the Federal Highway Administration's funding that is coming towards this project, and they're designated by FHWA, excuse me, to manage this project and the money that goes to us, and a lot of this money is flowing through them, because it's considered what they call Group 4, out of the urbanized area that Murphy handles. So what, their contract is expiring here shortly, so this is requesting us to give a supplemental agreement and extend the current contract we have with INDOT to manage this project and funding from FHWA.
And I think I saw on some of the update reports that we're sort of in the, are we in land acquisition mode yet, or?
Currently, we're in land acquisition process on this. Matt Gettleich, our highway engineer, has been going out with the DOZ engineer to some of the property owners and discussing this. We've had staking going up with the right-of-way on this, so people aware of it, letters have gone out to all of the citizens in this situation, so, yeah, we are in the current process of land acquisition.
How are, how are the discussions going, Matt?
That's what I wanted to ask.
Yeah, thank you.
But I met with four property owners out there, discussions have been well, they've basically asked a lot of questions about the right-of-way process, people have been confused as to what happens next. So, you know, it appears that the letters, the communication is working, people do understand it now. There's been several property owners who, just when they saw the stakes, they thought that the road was going out to there, but when we explained that the road is actually now widening, we're keeping it as a two-lane road, they understood after that, and we're improving the drainage for the area. So a lot of those factors help kind of ease tensions, when people see that right-of-way's happening, they get scared, but, yeah, it's helped a lot. The consultant has been great, been very flexible, you know, meeting people after hours, and so it's gone very smoothly.
Well, thank you. I know that was a big, but you know, part of the, you know, the county, we now have a highway engineer, we have some people in the highway department that can handle these things. So now that we have our staff, we're being more proactive to the taxpayers and the people that are, this is impacting, and we feel that's the right way to go about this, to be transparent and let people know what's actually happened, so we're actually being proactive and going to their doorstep, which I think is, from where we've been in the past up here, I think that's a big improvement. And I want to continue, we want to continue to keep that out there in front of us, so people can come to us and have discussions with us about these things.
Thank you. One thing I want to add to is, as you all have known, that we've gone through a lot of iterations on this project, where we have reduced the size of it, to reduce the impact of property owners, and it's nice to be there with the consultant to these property owners and explain to them, actually, we decided to reduce this, and show them the process. Once they've understood that, and that, you know, I explained to them, the commissioners wanted us to go out and meet with these homeowners, once they see the care and that we've taken to account for their needs, they really become more, I guess that ease the project.
Yep. Little communication always helps.
Well, yeah, as with everything that we do, you know, communication, I mean, that's the key to success, any project, stormwater, highway, bridge, so we'll continue to do that.
Well, thanks for following through, Matt, because I know when we met a couple months ago, that was the directive, and was glad to hear that that's going on the way it is, so thank you. So any questions of this board to the group? We need a motion on a supplemental.
Oh, I'm sorry, a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion is second for supplemental agreement with INDOT for reconstruction of project County Road 100 South. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Motion carries.
And this has to be signed in blue ink.
So this is a blue ink one?
This is a blue ink one.
If it bends out, we got to sign it blue ink.
They've returned it, especially black.
Yeah, I think you have one, right? Yeah, you have, yeah. We only buy one, folks. Next up, we have Bridge 131, this is 200 West over Damon Run. You want to give us a little update on that, Bob, or whomever?
This is a bridge that we recently received a funding award through INDOT against, what I referred to earlier as Group 4, Federal Highway Administration funding, and this is going to be under construction in fiscal year 2024, which starts July 1st of 2023. So this is for the design contract with us on, for Bridge 131, it is listed in our bridge inventory as one that we need to get to. It has a sufficiency rating less than 50%, which then qualifies it for federal highway funding. Our recommendation for this bridge is United Consulting out of Indianapolis.
And United Consulting is also the company that does our...
Bridge inspections.
Bridge inspections as well, too.
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure, make that clear. Any questions of the board on this one? This is a 2024 project, right, or really 2023?
Depending on how we go about with the design and getting it through the INDOT process, we could move it up to shortly after July 1st of 2023. I don't know if they have funding available, possibly in fiscal year 2023, maybe.
Okay.
It all depends on how fast we get through the engineering process.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion is second for United Consulting to be the design engineer for Bridge 131, that's 200 West over Damon Run. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Motion carries. Bridge 149, give us the, give us the lowdown on that one.
Okay, Bridge 149, we had a scoring team of four people on this, it was Mike, myself, Matt, and also Rich Sexton on this, going through and scoring all of the RFPs. We had, I should have gone back, mentioned 131, I think we had five RFPs on, on this particular one, we had eight or nine on 149.
Can you, can you digress a minute? We have a little time here, because it, from the public's perception, it looks like we're just picking people, and that's not what's happening. So could you, could you expound a little bit of how we're arriving to choosing these consultants?
Correct.
Because it's, it's a little more, it's a lot more detailed than what it sounds like, so I just...
Since, we are considered a local public agency through INDOT that we can go through and do a lot of this ourselves, we got certified, I sent that into INDOT.
We're certified by the state to do this.
Right. We're still going through all the full steps, so that we can show them that we're still following all of the federal highway procedures and all of that, we're going to go through the environmental process and all of this. So to be able to do that, INDOT has on their website, and we pull it off, this specific scoring that we use for the consultants, you know, past performances, what we think of the capacity, the team, and everything, we go through, and these, and they're really referred to as letters of interest, not RFQs. Letter of interest we go through, and...
I'll take one quick step back.
Sure.
So prior to getting to that point where we start the scoring and the qualification base selection, we issue a request for qualifications. So that goes out to all qualified consultants, saying, hey, we're interested in bringing design services aboard for these projects, please submit your level of interest. So the consultants will prepare those letters of interest, those proposals, and send them back to us. That's the five submittals that Bob mentioned on 131, and then we've got, we got nine on 149, and at that process, we start evaluating and scoring.
INDOT advertisement is on INDOT's website. Matt prepared it up with all of the qualifications that we needed from a consultant, sent it off, and it was posted and everything on that. So from there, after we collect all of the letter of interests on that, we distribute it to the scoring team of four, and we scored them individually, based off of the INDOT's scoring criteria that we have. From that, we tally up all of the scores, and whoever has the high score essentially is the winner of this. 139, 131, we were pretty unanimous on the decision. 149, the scoring came out with one ahead, but not all of us had scored that particular one. Our, but since they have the highest score, we are putting them forward to it, and again, it's United Consulting out of Indianapolis.
Any questions of the board?
I think you put everybody to sleep.
Yeah.
Don't ask how the sausage gets made.
One thing I want to add to is the scoring, well, actually posted on the highway engineering website, so anybody from the public can see what scores were received, and the consultants can see too, so they can get feedback on their letters of interest.
Yeah. Part of the transparency that we're trying to provide again, and let people know how we're doing this and why we're doing it, and...
So if you get a dirty accounting sheet, pull up the website.
So, sorry, it's boring, but...
No, but it's good.
We think it's important to let people know that we're just not...
Well, we enjoy, we enjoy it upstairs.
Yeah. The score is like going to class and taking a test, right, so.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion is second for Bridge 149, Waverly Road, Town of Porter, over Little Cal River, and United Consulting is the recommended design engineer for this project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Motion carries.
I just have one question. Bob, when are they, or Michael, when are they going to start work on this?
Our first process is, is we have to send this all, all of the scoring criteria over to INDOT, we have to also send down a request and show the information that United provided, so that way Indianapolis down there in their, what they call the DBE, disadvantaged business enterprise, reviews what has been submitted to make sure that they have met the DBE goal set for Porter County, which was 5% on that, and 5% of their contract is going to a DBE. Once we received a notification back on that, we send it to INDOT, along with our scoring criteria, if they say it's good, and everything like that, then they'll tell us to proceed with negotiation on that. And again, we're going to use the INDOT boilerplate contract as far as setting this up, as far as a contract. So we're going to be back again once we've gone through the negotiation with United on this, to present the contract for this. Probably, I would say, we won't be getting started on the engineering on this September, October.
Is this a major, a major redo?
The one on 149, both of them are total reconstructions.
The road will be closed.
The road will be closed. The one, 149 is on Waverly Road, Little Calumet River, we have to deal with the pedestrian bridge in there, so I mean, this one could be closed for a while because of the complexity of this particular project.
But what year are we looking at for construction?
Again, right now, I would have to say the earliest we can start based off of our award is July 1st of 2023.
Right. So that's in line with the one we just, it's in the same batch.
Correct.
So with these two now recommended for design, how many, how many of the 126 bridges, Matt, am I right? 126 bridges, we have, 132 bridges that we oversee, we now have what, under design, whatever, is that seven, eight, nine? Is that, where are we at?
No, we're...
Quite a bit more, I want to say 12.
I'm going to say 12, yeah. We're at 12.
I said, we're getting it, we're getting after it.
We're going to be sending you this spreadsheet showing all the...
I see the, I was playing the dirty looks, I'm getting roads closing.
We've got three roads that are going to be closing next month.
It's a sign of progress.
It is.
Yeah, it is, I mean, it's just, it has to happen, and I think everybody'd be happy once, when it, when they're all finished.
Oh, yes.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Last on the agenda for the Development Stormwater is the Tower Meadows subdivision, and we'll throw that over to Attorney McClure and to Bob Thompson and Stormwater Department.
Bob, have you heard anything from Hugues Pluss or Mr. Ferngrin?
I noticed when I went back up after the Stormwater meeting, and I didn't have time, because I grabbed my things and came back down in here, that there was a phone call in from Mr. Ferngrin.
To bring everybody up to speed, we have an agreement with BUDS Plus, the LLC that owns the remaining lots in Tower Meadows. They have a letter of credit that's good for several more months. Into the next year, they basically entered into an agreement with us in which they were to have all of the finder repaired and the top coat put on within the subdivision by, what, May 31st?
May 31st.
Of this year. So...
When does the bond go through till?
January of 2020.
Correct.
But the bond is with us, but it's also for maintenance too, right?
No, it's just for completion of the infrastructure that's out there.
Okay.
And basically that, and basically that's the road paving.
Right. There is, there are some issues with the stormwater system that Mike has on that. But the most obvious one...
That's not part of the bond though, is it? The drainage?
It's part, it could be, but that's...
It could be.
At the end of the day, the paving's going to eat up the, the, the letter of credit.
It is.
Well, we've talked about rain.
Yeah. Have they made any progress?
None.
I think at this point, there's, the commissioner's hands are somewhat tied. I think we have to, I guess my recommendation would be a motion to call the letter of credit. And that's it, call the letter of credit.
Yes.
And we'll go from there.
So everybody knows, I did reach out and remind Attorney Ferngren, who represents BUDS Plus LLC, that this written commitment was coming up and our intent was to be on the agenda of the June 11th Commissioner's meeting to discuss this. I sent it before the written commitment came into place. Never heard anything.
That is at least three weeks old.
Yeah, it is. And if he would at least came back and said to her and says, hey, I got a contract with a paving company to come in, I might have...
Let me see it.
Yeah, let me see it and I'll get it to the commissioners for their decision. I've received nothing.
So I guess, again, my recommendation would be for the commissioners to authorize myself and Mr. Thompson to begin the process of calling the letter of credit to allow us to finish the work that's contained within the letter of commitment, memorandum that we entered into before winter started.
Right.
I'll make that much a second.
We have a motion, a second, to, for a request to pull the letter of credit to complete the road construction for Tower Meadows, Tower Meadows discussion.
Disappointing.
Have they, yeah, have they, at one point, the last time when they were up here, there was a discussion that they were going to be selling a lot of lots to Oltoff.
They did.
So did that take place?
They did. Oltoff is building a lot of homes out there right now.
I think we're down to one lot.
Yes.
BUDS Plus, I think owns one lot that...
One lot out there.
...in litigation, you know.
Right.
It's going to be in purgatory for foreseeable future.
Right.
So they're down to one.
Matter of fact, I think I just reviewed and looked at last week when some people were out and I was going through building permits. I think I looked through five permits that Oltoff was pulling in the area. And I think three or four of them were for Tower Meadows. So I mean, they're doing well on there.
But, and those, that's going to almost finish those lots in time.
Correct.
And I, and Commissioner Good, I, I understand what you're getting at as far as the construction and where we're at with other homes being built. And Mr. Thompson and I will take that into consideration as we go through the process of calling this letter of credit and when we schedule things to happen.
It's a dance.
It is.
I mean, usually you want to get it, what, the rule of thumb is 75, 80% complete? Because, you know, once you put that surface course on, you're still going to have guys with big semis and bulldozers and...
Correct.
They're going to be coming in there and you have the probability of ripping it up. And it's our road after 2020.
Correct.
So that, that would be my only comment. And I appreciate that, Scott. I just, you guys keep that all in mind, let's find out where we're at with percentage of completion and some of those other things.
Okay, yeah, we'll go through and figure out that, we'll develop a percent.
Yep, okay.
Well, it's certainly something we don't like doing up here. Actually, it's only done on a very rare occasion. You almost have to be begging for it.
Well, and that's kind of how I feel that we're here. Because I don't remember, I don't remember the last time we called one.
I, I really can't remember, to be honest.
I agree with Laura, it's unfortunate, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, for a request, pull letter of credit to complete the road in Tower Meadows subdivision. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Stay dry out there. Next up, we have Valpo Chamber Commerce. The Valpo Chamber, who, hi Kurt.
Kurt Gillens, you're representing the Chamber.
And I'll turn it over to you and let us know what you and Commissioner Blaney are up to.
Just for a little bit of clarification, this, I, I do work for the Chamber of Commerce, but this is a project that is independent of the Chamber. This is the redevelopment commission. This is not a Chamber funded project at all.
But see, I see you and I think...
I know, I know. In 2012, the redevelopment commission started the public art walk up on Cumberland Crossing by the YMCA. And we have been looking for opportunities to increase the public art within Valparaiso. This year, we have selected eight pieces by two artists from Decatur, Indiana, that we will be bringing to the downtown area. Three of the pieces we are requesting to be put onto county property, two of them on the courthouse lawn and one on the lawn in front of the old, I shouldn't call it that, the Pocomuse. Yeah, it was very close, sorry Kevin.
He's not giving that all.
Yeah, I am. So those, those pieces would be installed starting on June 26th and remain through June of 2020. All the, the cost would be through the redevelopment commission, the Valparaiso Redevelopment Commission. And the city will hold insurance, liability insurance and replacement insurance on those pieces during the time that they are in our city.
They're really neat pieces too.
Do you see them?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I have pictures of them if you guys would like to see them.
Yes, I would like to see them.
I live on that side of town on Cumberland North, so I always go the back way and I always get to see all that out there. It's really cool.
Yeah.
A lot of it, there's a lot of it out there too.
The top, the top piece there, the blue looking guitar, that will be at the northeast corner of the courthouse by the pine trees that are there. Kind of a, it's a 14-foot tall piece, so it'll be pretty impressive there. And then the, the dancer will be the one that is in front of the Pocomuse. It just came out really easy there, there. And then the third piece is a tree and that'll go on the southwest corner of the courthouse, in line with the trees that are there already, is kind of a neat addition, kind of just straight through trees. They will all be on temporary concrete pads that will be moved into place, not to exceed four by four. That, the, the 14-foot tall piece has to have a four by four concrete pad, just for stability.
A sign that says, do not climb?
Yeah, that will be on there.
Very cool, looks great, Kurt.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion, a second, for a request by the Valparaiso Redevelopment Commission to display three art pieces in downtown Valparaiso on Porter County property. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same sign, motion carries. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, have a good day.
Yep, have a good day. Next up, we have Morgantown City Volunteer Fire Department. I don't think we have anybody here from the fire department. I don't see anybody, I know most everybody down there. This is a request every year to, with the assistance from the Porter County Sheriff's Department, to, to close State Road 49 through the duration of a parade on Labor Day, Monday, September 7th, 2nd, from 12 o'clock to 1:30. And the parade route will start from Morgantown City School parking lot, emergency vehicles, and County Road 325 South at Jake's Speed to County Road 150 East. It continues on by the Auditor's Home. I was just seeing if you were paying attention, Biggie.
Oh, yes.
And turn on 300 South and 325 South onto State Road 49, continue south to County Road 400 South, then west to County Road 150 East, then turn north and continue up 325 South and finish at Jake's Speed on Route 49. Is this the Fourth of July parade?
Labor Day.
Labor Day parade?
Yep, it's a Labor Day parade.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, for the approval of Morgantown City Volunteer Fire Department in assistance, in assistance from the Porter County Sheriff's Department. And I do know we did talk to the Sheriff's Department and they're okay with it to, to close the road for the Labor Day parade from noon to 1:30. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same sign, motion carries. And last on the agenda, we have the Kankakee Valley Historical Society Collier Lodge in Tina Rongers. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Tina Rongers and I'm president of Carner Blue. I'm a consultant that's been working with the Kankakee Valley Historical Society for several years now to help with the preservation of Collier Lodge, but also to grow KVHS as an organization to serve as a destination in South County. And with me is John Hudson, founder and president of KVHS. Would you like to open with a comment?
I didn't have anything in mind right now. Well, we're, we're at the final stage of, there were certain steps that we had to take to get to this point. And the initial one was to do an environmental survey. So a company was hired and they took the core samples. And it was determined that there are some environmental issues that would justify the Brownfield grant. It also fits in with our overall plan with working with the Schmid Association Architectural Company Indianapolis, that the most effective way or the best effective way of performing the work is to disassemble the building because structurally it's in a condition that men can't really work inside to do it. And with, I see the silver lining in this. One, it gives us a little time to build up our war chest. It also gives us a great opportunity to do an archaeological dig at the footprint of the Collier Lodge. And this is one that I've really been excited because we know nothing has happened to that since 18, well, it's been dates, 1898 or 1890. So it should be a prime spot. So, you know, we're, we can accomplish a few different things at the same time. It also gives us a great opportunity to do a thorough examination of the building. It'll be exactly how the pit was put together so that when we restore it, we can do it. And that's our plan, is to restore it as originally was, not as it looks right now. There's a few superficial changes that were made to the building, sort of rounded front. So we can take it back to the original building as is. So this Brownfield grant and the work is really key to a plan of successfully restoring the lodge so then it can be the cornerstone or the key point of the Collier Lodge. We, we have plans of a much bigger, more comprehensive site down there. We're more than just a preservation organization. So we're working and developing a historical, environmental, ecological, cultural center. And with this, I have 160 acres there and it is to be willed out to Porter County Parks and KVHS. We kind of look at the 200-year plan and I've seen how other historical societies that have buildings really can't survive on their own. They do need to work with a government agency of some sort, usually it is parks. And for years, I spent, me and my wife, we spent a lot of time meeting with different organizations that we felt would be a good pairing up with. And it was really decided, Porter County Parks, considering their mission of education was so close to what we were looking for. And also, Porter County Parks has been looking for an opportunity to really extend south. And we're, we're kind of the regaled stepchild of the county. The north end gets all the glory, the domes and all the pretty things. And we, we think we're kind of pretty too down here. And so if we can establish an area with that, I mean, I've got sort of grander, I see a bigger vision here. It's also cooperation with other agencies that hold land along the Kankakee. You've got the KRBC has 160 acres next to us. You have other agencies, Nippsco holds a lot of land. I can envision somewhere in the future that a real recreational area will cover the whole range of the Kankakee, really centered in Porter County. Well, a little partial to that, being in Porter County. But I think it'll be a great destination, they could be all tied together. And you can have miles and miles of trails and wild libraries. And historically, Balm's Bridge was always the center of activity. And that's not just my ego speaking, but historically speaking, Balm's Bridge was a center point. And you actually even look at the map of the Marble Powers Ditch. So it all sort of fits in, but that's where, in the last 12 years, my mind has been working on this thing. And this is where I sort of see, but that first step is to get the building, to deconstruct it in a manner. We have a site to store the material at, then build up our funds, do our archaeological dig and then restore the building. I'm really rambling, aren't I?
No, you're doing a good job at laying out what a larger vision is and, you know, the practical next step is, the last time that KVHS was before the commissioners, we were partnering for a historical plan. That was a $15,000 grant that we received through our partnership in working with the commissioners as the fiscal agent of OKRA Funds. We provided local match, we administered the grant, everything went smoothly between our organization and the county. The state was very pleased with our partnership effort. So the next step of that planning process is moving towards this Brownfield grant. So we're here before you today to once again seek partnership to work together in our, in our desire to pursue the Brownfield grant. OKRA did change this program, so the steps are a little differently this time. The first part of the application process is preparing a proposal. And so we would like to begin that with your consent partner today. That proposal process, in that proposal process, we also have to prepare competitive bids for grant administration and architectural and engineering services. So again, that's part of why we're starting here today to formally come into that consent, to be able to proceed with preparing the proposal. And again, we would work to do all of the project management work and do all of the legwork. And then we would coordinate with your office for signatures and so forth in pursuing that. Once the proposal is submitted, it takes about one month for OKRA to review it. They would come out, do a site visit. After the site visit, we would then be advised if we can proceed to the full proposal application.
It's been really neat to watch the progress over the time period. Come a long way. I make a motion to approve.
Second. I think what you're doing down there is really avocable. I mean, it's, it's, it really is becoming a jewel, you know, for the county to have, especially if it ends up in, in, you know, with our, our county parks department to manage. Thank you.
Well, it's interesting here, just a second, boy, get me rambling, is when I started researching the area, I come to realize that... when I started researching the area, I come to realize that we are the fourth group that have tried to establish this as a site. And I don't believe any of the other groups knew beforehand, just to me, I, it, it's just kinda creepy in a way. Uh, 1876, there was a town there. And, uh, really, it was the, uh, conditions, health conditions were such, the town just didn't get it started. Um, and then in 1929, there was a grand plan. They had, it was laid out as a town at Balm's Bridge. Uh, they had, uh, parcel out the sections for homes and, uh, they had government support. They had contractors, they had roofless cars. It came down, uh, big event. And that was two weeks before the Great Depression, uh, and it died. And then in 1959, the Porter County Con- South, the North, well, the Porter County Conservation Club bought the building and was gonna establish the Wallace. It was the town for Lou Wallace. And that was parceled out. Um, they wanted to make it a state park. And, uh, the main problem with that is at that time, they had established that ten, uh, state park needed to have a minimum of 10 acres and they only had two acres. And I, I believe that's what killed us. I've never built these rooms. And so we now are the fourth one. So we're talking over 120 years, there's been some desire in people to do something at this site and independent of all the others. And that's why it's easier now with researching, uh, digitally, online, to discover this. But when I finally put it together, it just, my God, you know, it just keeps happening. People want this stuff and they fail, and they fail, and they fail. Um, I think that we've laid it out now that hopefully we won't fail.
Well, I think the difference that, in our approach, is that, one, it's the leadership. So the leadership of the KVHS board that we can continue, that we continue to evolve, but also the leadership here at the Commissioners. With, um, our partnership for the historical plan, even though that was a small grant, that allowed us last year to, um, receive, uh, funding through Porter County Community Foundation, which supported the environmental studies that John spoke of. We also received a Porter County, or an Indiana Dunes Tourism Grant to help us with strategic planning. That was, uh, $5,000. And then we also received an Indiana Humanities Council, uh, grant to do a, uh, short video on Collier Lodge that we are now out promoting in the community. So that initial historic plan allowed us to, um, leverage about $18,000 last year alone in just grants coming into the organization in addition to private donors that we have that are supporting the local match. And just a final comment that we want to make regarding, um, the Brownfield grant is that KVHS, uh, we would be responsible for local match, the 10% uh, uh, portion of that. We would not be seeking county funds for that, uh, portion. With that, we thank you for your time and look forward to working in partnership and continuing the effort that John described.
Thank you. Did I second Laura's motion?
You did.
Yep.
I don't think we all did.
No, um, holding the, holding the band back together here. Um, so we have a motion of second for, uh, the Kankakee Valley Historical Society, uh, who's requesting a consent of the Porter County Commissioners to proceed with preparing an OKRA Brownfield Grant application, uh, for, uh, just deconstruction and salvage of the Collier Lodge. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that is, we are at the end of the meeting. Uh, anybody here willing, wanting to address this board? And with that, this board stands in recess. Thank you.